And they said they are not having any problems here, and if there is a car parked there, they will stop their vehicle, get out, and manually put it in the mailbox, so.
This is over by Dakota West Lane?
Right.
I know, beyond the outside.
Correct. And is anybody here to address this?
Well, if the post office doesn't have a problem, I don't have a problem. Someone moved it, deny.
Second.
Motion second to deny. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is denied. Next request for a crosswalk at Third and Sanborn Street in Mitchell. This came from the library board.
Came from the library board. Once we reopen this summer and for the, some of the children's hour, and the book readings in the mornings and those types of things, we have lots of kids that are crossing Sanborn from west to east and coming across on Second, Third, Fourth Street areas. And the discussion at the library board was if we could have a crosswalk in that area at Third and Sanborn, it would, from a safety standpoint, be beneficial. I understand crosswalks and whether they're used or not used, and whether people actually stop or don't stop, but we do have increased traffic there. The other deal is they're walking and riding their bikes into traffic on Third Street coming that way. So, we thought a crosswalk might help alleviate some of those issues. Don't know, so we wanted to send it here for discussion.
Similar to crosswalk, like in front of a bar, without that pedestrian?
That, or at-
Well, this would be different, because this is a four lane, and which is tricky. I mean, my first inclination was we would direct them to either First or Fifth, where you have a full set of lights. If you do absolutely want to put the crosswalk in, I'd recommend that we go to a flashing crosswalk system push button. And the price on that is going to be just over eight thousand dollars, plus we would have to install it. And it still is not, I mean, on a four lane, on any of them, it says on the manual and uniform traffic control devices that an engineer study should be done, and that is one of the things we could do with DOT. I could ask to get it on their engineering list. The other thing we may want to do is do a pedestrian count, which we have not done, to see how many people are actually using it in that area.
At one time, Longfellow was there, was not Longfellow, Whitty, I believe.
Whitty.
Was there one there at that time?
Yes.
Was that a four lane?
Yes, it was, but that was a red, yellow, green. It would bring a total stop. And if you'd want to do that, that would be all right, too, but it is more expensive than this. We'd have to go three-way.
Well, I can't see them walking down the Fifth Street or walking down the First Street. None of the kids, they're going to walk across the street.
Yeah. And right now, because of the lights, Dick and I were talking today, the lights do kind of give them a break in traffic. A natural break, right now, because it holds traffic.
At least for a little bit.
At least for a little bit, right. But them are just a few suggestions. I mean, if we'd want to do a pedestrian count or try and get on-
I think that'd be a good idea. Yeah, I would like to see, you know, just like when we were putting in the soccer- No, the soccer fields, and they said, "Well, we need access for bikes," and Dan did an unofficial count and three nights in a row, and counted one bike.
I know the state's looking at the same thing in Minnesota in the bypass, because we were part of their traffic engineering study this summer. So they're debating on the same thing, where it's a wide four lane. That's a little higher speed than what we've got on Sanborn yet, but short of putting in full traffic lights.
We're at Minnesota?
Minnesota, in the bypass, out by Innovative.
Bypass, oh wow.
Yeah, there's that crosswalk there.
That is.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
I know they're looking at it.
In fact, we brought that, we voted on that. We put that into-
We recommend it.
Yeah.
They know we want lights there.
Yeah, I can't remember what we included in there, but we threw that in there so the state would know that we're serious about doing something with safety up in that area. How long does it take to do a week?
Pedestrian count, we'd do it over like a day or two. We have to manually-
I was gonna say, you have to manually do it.
Right, yeah, we just pick a day.
The high traffic time for the-
It's summer.
It's summer.
Yeah.
Time frame, I don't know. During the day, you don't have lots of kids.
Vehicles, we can do a count automatically. We have counters, but pedestrian, we'd have to manually sit there. So, I mean, that's something we could sure look at, but-
Would a Saturday be somewhat comparable to a summer day? Probably not.
If we're not holding book reading or whatever those are.
Well, that's the thing, they've got the summer programs going on.
Right, summer program.
At the library.
And we would not have this budget to do that, so. Right. But we did get some hard quotes.
So Steve, tell us again, did somebody come to the library board, or is this the staff who witnessed it and indicated that the safety is concerned?
Jessica.
It was actually brought to our attention from a parent and staff members. They both brought it up, and we talked about it in regards to the transit bus as well, because when we drive the transit bus, there are children that are crossing there. So that's how it was brought up.
The summertime is, would be probably-
The busiest time.
The time that it would come into play the most, because we don't have the kids' programs except in the school year, except possibly on weekends and other stuff, so. But weekday mornings in the summertime, there are kids traveling to the library.
And I did not, I was not aware that there was a light there, but the staff member said there was a light at the one, at one point in time when the school was there, and that was actually safer when the children were passing.
Yep, there was a push button, red, yellow, green, for north-south traffic. Anybody else care to address this?
What's the price of the yellow, green, red light?
Well-
That's like thirty thousand, is that?
No.
More than that.
It's four directions, it's like two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Oh my. Oh boy.
So I don't know what a three-direction would be. Maybe you'd even have to do four, wouldn't you, Dick, or not?
I would do four.
Yeah. So you'd be two-hundred, probably.
Well, you know, the thing about it is, is we invested into the library, hoping people would use it. And now they're using it, so I think we probably need to do something and address it. You know, we kind of talked about the same thing at Burr and the railroad bridge over there, where kids are heading over to Hitchcock, and, you know, we did put a crosswalk there.
Right, that one's about ten thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be solar powered. That's four lane. We talked to, we were out there today, too. We visited with some people. You've been through it. Traffic doesn't slow down a lot.
Traffic really doesn't slow down very much.
No.
Maybe brings awareness to it, that somebody's there, but, yeah.
I'm not on the committee, but can I just ask you?
Sure.
When you do the crosswalk, the, yeah, the crosswalk signs, the lights, you don't necessarily have to put in a traffic signal there, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Nope, that's correct.
So is, does it improve the effectiveness of the crossing signal if there's a sign?
We have to have a sign, but the lights-
If the lights are, yeah.
That is the assumption, yes. I mean, this brings more awareness. It would be activated by a push button. It wouldn't be on all the time. And our recommendation would be, if you want to do that, is to go to the strobe system rather than the LEDs around the sign. Just try something different, and you have a copy of it there. It's kind of, Deadwood has several different locations, right. Solar-powered.
The one on Burr has the-
It has the lights built right in the edge of the sign. Yep, LED.
So this is different than the one we put at Burr?
Yes. Yep, this has more of a flashing, like, almost like a light bar underneath it. And the one at Burr has all the LEDs inside of it.
Did we specifically try to route traffic down Sanborn and around, away from downtown, to get to the Dallas side?
We still do.
Still do.
Yep, that's a major route.
I mean, so it is a major route, and it's, it gets a crossing, it becomes more of an issue.
Was there any money left in the budget, or with the renovation fund for the library?
No.
Wiped around.
Did you guys have money in-
We spent it all down the-
Do you guys have money in any other funds, Steve?
There is a separate library fund, and I believe that the question was asked whether they could use that fund or not, and there wasn't a commitment from the board of trustees.
Correct, at this point. And I can't, I can't remember how, Jackie, do you remember how much we have in the trustees' fund? I don't remember. I thought we had maybe ten thousand dollars.
Probably about ten thousand, but we'll probably have another payment. We'll probably have another payment to SDLN, so that's another five thousand, so there'd probably be five thousand left.
So there might be some that the library trustees could put toward-
Could be willing to kick in, yes.
Well, given the fact that, you know, we're not in any large hurry here, because it would-
Actually, if we could have it by next spring for next summer, that would be-
That would be good. Do you guys want to go back to the library board and talk about it, maybe come with a proposal?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
You guys sold the approximate cost on it now, so.
Yeah, eight thousand plus-
Was it eight thousand?
Eight thousand sixty-six, plus we would have to install it.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't hear from back there. Just a little tidbit of information, yes, we are experiencing a lot more foot traffic with the kids, but we're also getting some family programming in at night, so we're going to be busy in the evenings as well. And over the years, we've had, seen a few near misses, tire squealing to avoid hitting somebody. Yeah, I really think it's necessary. We just don't want to have somebody hit.
As far as car crashes, we've had, from 2012 to 2015, there was two. They both happened in 2014.
At Third and-
At Third, okay.
One veered off the road and hit a pole, and another one, it was two cars.
Okay.
It is a tricky intersection. You really have to time it.
Yeah, if you're especially-
Yes, you do.
While you travel on the west.
Well, I'll motion to table, and you guys go back and come up with somewhat of a plan and see what maybe you could bring with the funds. And I will put a date on, just whenever you guys are meeting next and come back.
We can probably have it back for December.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion to table for December meeting.
I'll second.
Motion in the second to table this request till December. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion's carried. Next, I had a request from Hank Cork to put up stop signs, north-south part of the intersection for Third and Lawler. You should all have the MUTCD recommendations on when to put a stop sign in. Some of the areas is, if you have vehicular traffic, over six thousand vehicles per day, which I don't think we have, if there's a restricted view that exists, which we may have at times with the parking in that area, or if there's a crash record that indicates three or more crashes within a twelve-month period, or five or more crashes in a two-year period.
Do we have five or more?
We don't. We're getting close.
Do we have three or more?
No, we don't. We do not on this one. That's the next one. We had one in 2013, and now we had one in 2015. But we had, would have somewhat of a site restriction from southbound traffic going, or northbound traffic. Because of the parking in that area, we also had a request, if we don't put stop signs up, to possibly restrict parking on that. All the way like the bank drive, which would be the whole east side of that half block, to keep the traffic from approaching. I mean, so they could see them, the traffic that's approaching. But I don't think that is going to be favorable by local businesses.
Yeah, they don't want to reduce parking by there, but-
So based on the restriction, we could put-
If you cut one parking spot out, is that a-
We could do that, too, yeah. I don't know, Hank is here. I don't know if you'd want to address the committee?
Have they seen my letter at all?
Yes, yep.
All right. Even the people who are in the apartments, a couple of our employees are there. I was going to suggest a four-way stop to consider those who are also going the wrong way. Third Avenue, but one of the issues is people are just traveling way too fast. The other morning, I was going to the bank, and somebody was cruising from Fifth, and if you go, it peaks right there at Third, and then they hit their brakes to slow down to First. So you've got a four-block stretch there. It's not unusual to see people going thirty miles an hour down that street. And we did put the pedestrian signs up. You know, if you want to walk out in front of a car and challenge it, they'll probably slow it down, but otherwise, many times, they're going to cruise by, and people who live in the apartments there will tell me that as well. So I really believe that, and you talked about taking our parking away, and I don't think we're really in favor of that. But I'd like you to, you know, drive up Third Avenue, try to make a left turn on Lawler, by the bank there, and you, yesterday morning, somebody pulled out into the intersection and had to stop because there was another car cruising, but you got to get into the intersection to see that.
Right.
And if you-
So that's where the site restriction may come into play, which is warranted. Otherwise, this manual also says you should never put stop signs up for speed control. It does, yeah.
Yep.
You'd never use stop signs for speed control.
Well, I just think, in light of trying to turn there in light of speed, for my purposes, for the safety of that corner, we really need, that's a, that's a major uncontrolled foot traffic in this city, with the theater, with our businesses, Cornerstone, everything. That block right there is, I think, the major-
I've heard from nobody that opposes this.
Anyway.
I live on Third, just a couple blocks up from that, and I know the traffic shoots by there.
What's that?
So, and I've done that left-hand turn.
I know.
It's very difficult.
Yep, stand out there.
And you do have to get almost right out in the intersection.
And even walking sometimes, when we walk down to the theater, you know, you're poking your nose out. I think it's an issue.
Anybody else care to address this? Come forward and state your name.
My name is Rose Marie Halfman Drake Gorillas, my great nephew, and he and his paternal mother, grandmother, were injured. Sometimes I feel like you might as well wear a blindfold when you go through the intersection, because you cannot see. I mean, it's very, very dangerous, and I think that people need to be educated about driving, the laws of driving, because in California, when you renew your driver's license, you have to take a two-page test. And even at Third and Raleigh, by the Carnegie Resource Center and the church, that's also a very dangerous intersection.
Especially if there's funerals.
Yes. I mean, people don't turn on their signals. I'm just shocked sometimes when I see, when I drive.
Don't want to get into any of the real details, Lynn, if you don't want to, but when your policeman did the report, what did they say in that particular accident?
That pedestrian one? Yeah, the stop sign probably would not have made any difference. I don't know if there was a site restriction or something like that about where they were in the crosswalk. They were partway into the street already. Why the driver didn't see them, I'm not quite sure. I mean, they were like right in the middle, so.
But if there was a stop sign, the driver probably would have been stopping.
She did stop, and then just went around. She was going west. So she was at the established stop sign there. So these stop signs we're talking about today would have had no effect on that crash, because it was a different set of movements.
Right.
I think you ought to hold-
Yes.
I don't agree with that, and the reason I don't agree with that-
Hank, can you come up and talk into the microphone a second?
I don't agree with that, because I think that you really have to scoot around a corner sometimes because there are cars coming, and I think she was looked maybe that way and that way, and all of a sudden scooted, and there's somebody right in front of her. If there was a stop sign, there would have been a controlled turn there, but that's my opinion.
But it wouldn't have stopped the pedestrians from crossing.
Oh, no. No, 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 no.
Okay.
But it may have stopped her, you know what I'm saying?
It would have been more controlled, from my perspective.
I think you ought to hold-
Okay, for a matter of time, do we have a motion on this?
Can I say something else? I think you ought to hold education forums about people should obey traffic laws, because it's not the speed limit, it's what's in the environment and the road conditions. Because sometimes if the sun is blind, is blinding you, I mean, you have to watch for everything. When I lived in California, I was driving down Tustin Avenue, and a paint can came towards my car. If my car, if a paint can would have hit my car, I could have caused a serious accident. You have to watch for everything.
Yep.
You do.
You're correct. Thank you. Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second to approve. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion's carried. Mayor, do you want me to continue on, or? Okay. Next, a request from Amanda Hiles to place a stop sign at Douglas in South Maine and Elm in South Maine. I don't know if Amanda is here. You may step forward if you have anything to say. As you're coming forward, I'll give you the crash statistics. At Douglas in Maine, from 2012 to 2015, we've had zero. At Elm in Maine, we had one in 2012. We've had three in 2014, and one in 2015. If we have one more in 2015, we will meet the crash criteria.
At Elm in Maine?
At Elm in Maine. The first was Douglas in Maine, the one at Elm in Maine.
So at the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, and it has, this has yield signs arrayed.
Yep.
Yep, and at Douglas in Maine, there is a little bit of a site restriction on the northeast corner. There's a tree and a utility post there, but if you decide to do this, I would recommend it for the north-south traffic, because east-west seems to be the primary.
At Douglas in Maine, there's also a great big dip right there.
There is, yep.
That you can't go more than-
You can't go very fast anyway.
Very fast, unless you're bottom out.
People do a lot. Now, there are yellow apartments. You can see the three buildings there. Children from that one will come down to where the blue ones are where I live. They will cross that road, and they're little like her. And I'm not their parent. I would not let my children cross that road. But cars do not yield, even with a yield sign. They do not yield. If I had been home two minutes sooner, I'd have seen that crash in 2015, just a couple, just about a week ago.
Last week or two weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I see parents drive through there, their kids not buckled up, and they have been barely missed by traffic coming the other direction. And I don't want, stop for a minute, my children to witness an accident where somebody is seriously injured or killed.
True.
And, I mean, nobody slows down. I would rather it be a stop than a slowdown, because they don't listen to the yield signs.
This yield was put in in 2005.
Is there a yield sign on Elm in South Maine?
Elm in Maine?
Yes.
Yes, that's where, there is a yield sign from north-south.
And that's the one that's going to have one more accident that would warrant a stop sign?
Yep, yep. Since 2012, there's been five crashes.
Yeah, I work in that area, and it's horrible on Elm, the, because if you drive that, and it's actually a road-
It's kind of wide open.
It is.
Elm is, yeah.
There's also a assisted living home right on the corner of Elm and Maine.
Right.
And some, there's a resident there who'll push himself out of a wheelchair, kind of roll himself down the hill, and sit by the edge of the road and throw grass. He doesn't need to be hurt either. So I'm thinking as far as like my child, my friend's kids, the disabled folks that live across the street, you know. It's just getting, it's getting out of control, and I was, I was concerned about it when I first moved in about a year ago. But I am, just wait, I am extremely in concern for the children that live around there, so.
I've got a feeling that we might have more.
Right.
If we end up with accepting this, because there's other intersections that are probably just as dangerous, if not more.
So I would, you know, I would have no problem putting them in both of these.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve stop signs at both Douglas and South Maine and Elm in South Maine. This is for north-south traffic, right?
Correct.
North-south. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion's carried. Next request for the closure of 600 Block North Main on Tuesday, October 13, from 1:30 p.m. to 8:30, to 8:00 p.m. for the POD immunization training. This is an annual event that we've done several years. Have no problems with it.
Move to approve.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion's carried. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, it will be an adjournment.
Ready to go, aren't we, huh? Do we have an invocation here for Muslim?
Let's pray. Gracious Father in heaven, we pray your blessing upon the proceedings of this meeting. We thank you for those who, these servants, public servants, who serve for the good of our community. We pray, Lord, that they might truly be serving leaders, and serve with, and make decisions based on principle. May your presence and your guidance be here throughout this meeting, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Olson.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Tronis.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Charks.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Number six and seventh on the agenda was the appointment of the city attorney and the oath of office for the city attorney, and I have table that until October the 5th. So the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items. Does anyone in the council have anything they wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I don't have anything to remove, but I just wanted to point out that the gas and diesel fuel, the competitive bids, we've now added a third, and so that's always good to see that we've got more people bidding on them.
Okay, does anyone from the public have anything they wish to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Dosher.
Aye.
Tronis.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is a citizen's input, but before we begin, I'd like to make a statement on that. I have heard that there may be some citizens here tonight that would like to address the council regarding personnel issues. Before we begin the public input session, I need to inform you that it is a policy of the city of Mitchell to address personnel issues only during the executive session, not during the public meeting. However, if anyone wishes to address the council, you are more than welcome to attend the executive session after the regular meeting, and will have the opportunity to state your concerns at that time. We will have individuals address the executive session, one person at a time, and according to the way the agenda looks, we should be starting our executive session around approximately nine o'clock. So if that being said, does anyone want to approach the podium with a non-personnel issue to discuss, or comment on?
I have one, one thing. I've had a number of people comment to me about First and Main. Have you had any complaints? The complaint that I hear is people line up in the left lane, and they get stuck behind somebody who's going to turn. So then people turn into the right lane, and now you have two cars moving forward, and they're wondering what the odds are of going back to the old way. So I just wondered if you had heard anything, or...
I've had a little bit of input, but not lately. I mean, we changed it, it was, it was the other way around. When we put new markings down, we decided at that point to try this, just to get lanes lined up better, but it would be...
Is there any, any fine? Or is somebody not turning right and going straight through?
It'd be improper right turn, more than likely, if they had a crash.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's a right turn only lane there right now. For the most part, there was confusion at first because the sign didn't get up right away, and both the arrows didn't get painted the same day. There was, so there was some confusion for about two, three days.
Yeah, well, I don't think there's any confusion, I just think there's impatience, that's what I think.
I think you're right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Lemoyne Torgerson. We run under pressure that we could provide citizen input, and we've got several people here that would like to make some comments regarding the Corn Palace situation. I don't know if you're considering that personnel or not, but our people have come tonight, some of them cannot stay till nine, 10 o'clock. So I guess I'm requesting that these people, and we speak to that issue at this time, which is normally citizen input at this time.
Thank you, Lemoyne. It is a personnel issue. If it's to talk about the resignation of Mr. Sabers as Corn Palace Director, that is a personnel issue. It has to be discussed in executive session, that is state law.
Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
We cannot, we cannot provide input at this time regarding...
I, well...
Provide input.
I might suggest that you get through some of these items gradually, and then move up to executive session, then finish the council meeting afterwards.
You cannot waive that and let these citizens that are here took their time to come down?
Lemoyne, I can't do that because it is state law, and I'm not allowed to comment on personnel issues in, in, in the regular open session. It has to be done in executive session. That is state law, and I have to abide by that.
It is the only way that the council could comment, and they would want to have some comments, and it's impossible for that to occur, but for the manner in which Mayor Toomey is suggesting, but...
What if the council doesn't comment? What if we just listen?
I agree.
No?
Happy.
I guess, I think that's be the mayor's call, but you could move the executive session to right now if you want, if everybody goes out.
And that may be something to consider, is if, if we can rearrange the schedule and do the executive session now. I think, out of all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I think we know there's several people here concerning this one issue, and, and I guess if I was in their situation, thinking that I could come here and provide input on citizen's input, which I would assume that, but I understand what the state law prohibits, but I would see if we could take a look at the agenda and rearrange it to make it work.
The city councils in favor of going into an executive session now, I have no problem with that.
My preference would be letting people listen. I have, I guess I've never had an issue with, with people, and I'm fine with not commenting. That would be my preference, but if everybody else's preference is executive session.
Well, there are two issues, and I don't know anything about this resignation one way or the other. But if there are issues of cause, and I don't know that there are, then it would be unfair to Mr. Sabers to air that in the open, and it would be a violation of state law to air that in the open. So I frankly have never heard of citizens being invited to an executive session, but if that's what the mayor wants to do, I guess we can do that. So I'm not sure what the difference is between doing it in open session and then inviting everybody back for the executive session, or if you just declare it right now.
I'm, I am operating under the advice given to me by legal counsel in Sioux Falls, to do this in closed, closed executive session.
But I'll be...
And that's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
Part of that executive session?
Take, one at a time. But this, but this recommendation came from Lisa Marshall out of Sioux Falls, and she says, when you, when you address the council tonight, regular session, you do not talk about personnel issues, period. She says, you want to talk about it, you talk about it in executive session, they come in one at a time. So I am saying this under the advice of legal counsel.
And that's important, because she is the attorney for the...
We are not necessarily asking for comments from the council. Our four or five people would just like to make some statements regarding Mr. Sabers, his character dotted off, so we're not asking for, you know, any comments or feedback or directions or nothing, we're just wanting to make some comments.
That's normally the way the, the citizen's input is, it's three, three minutes per person, and the council does not discuss it or take any action on it. Again, just going on the advice that was given to me by Lisa Marshall out of Sioux Falls, our attorney, who says, do not discuss it in, in, in the regular session, discuss it in executive session, one person at a time. Now, if, if the council wants to override that, I guess that's going to be their decision then.
I have no problem with, with these people talking tonight. I, let's get it on the table, let's move.
Well, and I don't have any problem with them talking tonight either, if we do it in the proper way. I mean, the proper way would be...
I think the proper way is executive session.
To declare executive session, to have everybody go out, and anybody who wanted to speak on that particular subject would come in one at, one at a time, and we would hear what they would have to say, and we'd do that until people are done. I, the only question I have, is there anything else that you have under executive session?
There are a couple of things, yes.
You could, you could just adjourn the executive session.
And reconvene again later, I think we can do that. Recede, go back into it later.
Well, then I will move that the city council enters into executive session now for the purposes listed on the agenda.
Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No, aye.
Roll call, please.
Olson.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Trannis.
Aye.
Dosher.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
No.
Charks.
Aye.